Sorry, I got my mic going. Chair Rhodes-Dyne?
President.
Comis-- Vice Chair Buck?
President.
Commissioner Salazar? Commissioner Stout is also in attendance at this point, so we need to make sure he's hearing your presentation.
I can hear you now. Thank you.
Pardon me, there are technical difficulties and I'm gonna be calling IT about the echo because it's not.
Now he's done. Okay, can I hold him?
Sarah, if it's not gonna work for me, don't delay the review unnecessarily. Thank you.
No, there will be other people coming online and I don't know what they've changed the settings, but it's a... How's that? Just a minute. I have never had to turn off that. Testing? That was it. Thank you, Sandy. Okay, I'll go ahead and continue then. Okay. So looking first, I'll just get going here. I know you have a long night. Looking first at the background. Can you switch to the next slide? All right, so there's the American with Disabilities Act. Has a, the city is subject to the American with Disabilities Act for programs, facilities, and services. Those obligations are contained in something called the Transition Plan, which is, oh, thank you. Which is a written document on the city's website that explains our city's plan for addressing ADA compliance. It's periodically updated. It was last updated in 2017. We started this update in 2022 and are now bringing it forward. It, um... Notes here. We have done some progress since 2017. This room actually is a prime example of the improvements the city has done in the Transition Plan. Since that time, these chambers have been remodeled to be more accessible. Everything from the table to the furniture to the dais to access is an example of compliance with the ADA plan. Also, some City Hall accessibility, making sure that the elevators are ADA compliant. We do have one elevator that's out of service, but the two that serve the public by the museum and the library are working. Also, improving access with doors, having the automatic doors for people to press so things can open, things like that. Sounds like a small thing, but it's really important to people to have access here, to come into the city, whether they have business or they're attending the library or a city council meeting. The third area is curb ramps. Curb ramps are required on public and private projects. It can be quite costly and it is a budget issue for the city, but we have done an inventory and on-map, bring our map program have a layer that can show where ADA ramps are complete and accessible. So the focus for 2024 is programs and services. Examples of that kind of thing would be customer service at the counter or at the library, public meetings, hearings, and events, including these planning commission meetings, printed materials, and then the city's website. The website was just recently redone to be improved and is ADA compliant. The Public Involvement Plan is the way that we are intending to get public in, out, public input through outreach on the Transition Plan. The purpose of that is, has a couple of reasons. One, there's a legal complaint, a legal requirement that you do public outreach. There needs to be notice of the plan. Also, it's an opportunity to educate and have some dialogue and be really thoughtful about reaching out to stakeholders. It's important when you're doing work like this to make sure it's done well and that you've put some effort into thinking about who would people be that would have, in our community, that would have input on this kind of project. So we will work on that starting in the fall. Then this matter, the engagement will occur through the fall through electronic means mostly, and then a targeted outreach. And then the cat will incorporate any changes we get at late fall, and then this will go back to the council for a public hearing and approval in early 2025. So they will at that point have an opportunity to hear from the public in a more formal public setting with a public hearing, and then also a chance to review the plan themselves and give some input. Included in your packet is a copy of the draft Public Involvement Plan and the draft Transition Plan. We will start work on this. Happy to hear any input you have, and if you think of anything afterwards, you can certainly contact us. And also, just want to again, thanks the team here at the city for helping me with this. Jamie Aboa and Elise Didson, the other people who did work on the actual Transition Plan. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or take any feedback that you would have.
So in terms of, or as far as the curb ramps go, it seems like that would be the, one of the more difficult challenges, both in budget and finding where the corridors that these, do you give a communication with folks that use those ramps and what, have you had, ask what corridors they're using?
Yeah, that's a great question. I should have brought, I should have brought that up. The Transition Plan talks about prioritizing, and the ADA recommends this, prioritizing kind of starting from city facilities like City Hall, and then working your way out toward, out from there. So making sure that you have curb ramps and access to public buildings, Justice Center, City Hall, other buildings like that. And then next would be looking at, okay, where are your main transportation lines? Where are people getting public access, public transportation and going from there? And then through this public involvement, hopefully getting more input from folks like about, hey, we have a problem here getting to the school or other areas in the neighborhood, and then that lets us know, along with the inventory that staff does, where the curb ramp should go.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I think one thing that I just want to applaud is just how clear it is in the plan what is and is not covered under the city's responsibilities. I think in, in the broader public, there's a misconception of what is or is not, what sort of facilities especially are or are not covered under the Americans with Disabilities Act. So I think, yeah, just applaud for making that as clear to the public as possible. And I think in, just in terms of outreach, yeah, reaching out to organizations that specifically serve people with disabilities, I think Lane Independent Living Alliance, Senior and Disability Services, I'm sure they're all on your list. But I think those organizations and the staff at those organizations could be a great wealth of, of resources and just gathering opinions and feedback from their clients that they serve.
Thank you. Yeah, that's helpful. This is one thing I really like about working on this project is that, you know, the disabilities are so varied and they can be temporary or lifelong, and the way technology integrates with those now, it's really amazing what people can do. And the way that we can assist people to be, you know, fully participating citizens in our community, it's great. So I always like working on this project, so. All right. Well, if you don't have anything else, I'll be done and you can get on to the Planning Commission part of your meeting.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Okay. So we will adjourn the CCI session. And if we're ready, we can open the work session? Okay. I hereby open the work session of the Springfield Planning Commission meeting. Do you have any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none, I'm gonna call our agenda item, Annexation Code Amendments, Haley.
Thank you, commissioners. I have a short presentation for the work session today because I'm saving it all for the public hearing in a few minutes. So I'm gonna have Sarah get started with that. Okay. Thank you for attending this work session to discuss the Springfield Development Code amendments for annexation. Tonight before the hearing, we'd like to discuss the proposed changes to the Legislative Code amendments, as well as the public comments and testimony received at the workshops on Springfield, Oregon Speaks, and via email. So as you may remember from the work session we held on July 2nd, we proposed three options for owner consent initiated annexations to either proceed to a public hearing or not. If a public hearing is not required, notice of a public hearing is not provided. Following the workshops on July 17th and 18th, we received feedback from the public that there was support for the second option shown on the screen, which would allow an exception for a public hearing for owner consent annexations when the property is adjacent to the city limits and city services on a single lot or parcel less than 10,000 square feet with a failing septic, and in the R1 district or designated low-density residential. After reviewing annexations submitted to the city during 2023 and 2024, only one application met these criteria, but it was not an owner consent annexation. This proposal has therefore been incorporated into the Legislative Code amendments. A third option not incorporated into the Legislative Code amendments is an exception, which would be no hearing for owner consent initiated annexations unless the property includes natural resources or natural hazards. Following the workshop on July 17th and 18th, no comments were provided regarding this option. Certain areas and districts could impede a property from being adequately served by water, sewer, stormwater drainage, or streets at the time development is complete. The city could require a public hearing for owner consent annexations when the property is in the Hillside Overlay District, in the Floodplain Overlay District, includes a water quality limited water course, or has a locally significant wetland or riparian area. Half of the annexations submitted to the city during 2023 to 2024 included natural resources or areas with natural hazards. Five of the eight owner consent annexations did not include natural resources or areas with natural hazards, so they wouldn't, so they would have required a public hearing. This option could be included in the Legislative Code amendments if the Planning Commission recommends its incorporation. The next thing we discussed was, and is outlined in the Planning Commission briefing memo, is for public hearing notices. The minimum requirement in state law, according to ORS 197.7972, for a local quasi-judicial land use hearing requires that notice of the hearing is provided to the applicant and to owners of property within 100 feet of the subject property to be annexed where the property is wholly or in part within an urban growth boundary. This option reduces overhead costs to applicants in the city by amending the notice requirements to include only owners of properties located within 100 feet of the perimeter of a property to be annexed. The second option keeps the notice requirements as they were written in the existing code under Springfield Development Code 5.7.130. That notice of a public hearing is mailed to owners and occupants of property located within 300 feet of the perimeter of the property to be annexed. The third option could amend who, owners and occupants, or just owners, and from what distance, a minimum of 100 feet to 300 or more feet notice is given. Following the workshops on July 17th and 18th, members of the public requested that the existing code standards for notice that includes property owners and occupants within 300 feet of the property be maintained. This change has been incorporated into the Legislative Code amendments. So we now like to revisit the draft code and open the floor up to the commissioners for feedback as well as questions.
Thank you, Chair. So one of the things that popped out to me, and I guess I would like a little bit more maybe flushed out, is, you know, for SEC 5.7.130 and pertaining to the slide you showed, it looks like our current standards exceed state law. And so one of the things I was thinking about when I was looking at the excellent memorandum you, you typed up was, is the rationale, I think per the reasoning in the report, as well as to reduce overhead costs, and I assume to expedite the review process? Like, can you talk more about that?
Absolutely. I figured you guys are gonna ask this question, so I have a lot more information for you tonight than I had at July 2nd. Sarah, would you pull up the Excel spreadsheet for me? Along with all the highlighting. Yeah. Okay, so, and Sarah, would you just scroll over to the right a little bit for me? Okay, um... Sorry, we just need to go down a little bit more. Yep. Actually, can you go back to the left a little bit? Yep. Sorry. Okay. And that's good. Okay. So after the work session, I did a little bit more digging into the applications that had been submitted within that timeframe. I'm sorry, just one second. Let me bring up my Excel spreadsheet where I put it myself. Okay, so basically what you're seeing on the screen is a breakdown where I compared what was proposed in the Legislative Code. So what we originally had proposed in the Legislative Code was for public notice to be provided just to owners within 100 feet. And then based off of feedback from some of the planning commissioners, we also expanded it to owners and occupants within 100 feet. So we took the list of all the people that we mailed for those annexation applications, and we compared the cost difference. So that cost difference included the cost to mail and then the change in numbers from who we mailed to, essentially. So at the very bottom, right there in the, in bold, you're seeing the total average cost difference. So for owners within 100 feet that we would mail to, the total cost difference was 134%. And then if we mailed to owners and occupants within 100 feet, the total cost difference was about 84%. So this is just the, the cost to mail. That does not include the time for staff to produce those documents, and that is also on this Excel spreadsheet, and where I broke down the hours that it would take for staff to prepare those materials as well. I can go into that more if you want more information on that, too.
Sorry, you lost me there a little bit. Just because on our screen, I can't see the, the columns labeled. So can you column G and H or which ones now? Okay. Owners and occupants, okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry, so that column G and H, so you're, so if it's owners and occupants, it's 134% of what?
So if it's owners within 100 feet, it's 134% of what the original cost was. So it reduced, it reduced by 134% of what the previous cost to mail to was. So under the existing code, we mailed to owners and occupants within 300 feet. If we changed to the Development Code to read just owners within 100 feet, the cost difference just to mail to people was reduced by about 134%. If we mailed to owners and occupants within 100 feet, then the cost just to mail was reduced to about 84%.
So can you give us an understanding when we convert from percentages to dollar amounts? What, what does that look like? What does that look?
Yeah, I mean, you can kind of see it right there in, in the column. So Sarah, would you scroll over just a little bit to the left for me? And we're just gonna go up to the, like, let's go up to the beginning just a little bit. So you can see right there kind of in the notice of hearing cost for, let's take, this was for the Ganson annexation, so I'm sure people who are listening to this or people who attend the public hearing would like to know this. We mailed to 400 people and the cost for postage cost us $272. And then the cost difference, again, I've got it listed right there, for owners within 100 feet that we would mail to, just owners, the cost was 300, or $38.16. And then if we mailed to owners and occupants within 100 feet, the cost was $77.04.
Yeah, so did you do any numbers for owners only at 300 feet?
I didn't. I'm sorry.
It's your sense.
Um...
Between?
I think it's really gonna depend on the area, so like...
How many owners are in that?
Yeah, versus, if you're in close proximity to a rental property that has a significant amount of units, it's definitely gonna change. Like, especially for Ganson, if you're looking at it, so just owners, we had 53, and then when we applied owners and occupants, we had 107. So let's just say we doubled it.
If you're in an apartment, that's one owner.
Yeah, but...
A complex, one owner.
It, but it could be occupants. So it could be anybody within that rental if there was, so if it's owners and occupants, it'd be, let's say you had like a 15, a 50-unit apartment complex, which is what I would guesstimate for Ganson. You know, that doubled the amount of people that we mailed to.
Well, let me, I'll just comment. So I guess where I'm at is I, I want owners only. You know, they're the ones that are at risk or have risk, and then I like 300 feet. I mean, I just think you need to go out there a little farther. So, but again, if it's, you know, if we're doing occupants, it seems to me that's just overkill. Okay, thank you.
I tend, I tend to agree. I feel like, um... Well, there, I think there's a value in occupants, you know, being notified. But I also feel like there, at some point, the question needs to get asked, whose responsibility is that? I feel like for owners, they have a responsibility to their occupants. And I don't know that I'm there, that the city has to take on that responsibility for owners. That having been said, I like 300 feet because I think the difference between 100 and 300 feet is not that great. And, and it's something we've been doing. And so it's not like we're expanding, we've been doing it. And while I don't, I can't remember what you said the timeframe is, I mean, it's not, it, it, it looks like we're talking about hundreds of dollars, not, you know, thousands or, you know, or higher. And so I think more transparency and more notification in that wider group makes a lot of sense. But I do, I do see how the owners have the responsibility to communicate that to their, their occupants. And maybe that can be something that's clarified when owners are, are notified.
I want to also add, so I realize it's important to minimize staff exposure to expenses. So that's why, and I'm saying owner because I, you know, occupant is, you know, can easily move, obviously have an interest in what goes on around them, but they do, they can. I don't know, some people may take this wrong, but the owner is the one, again, with the risk, they're the ones that should be made clear or be pointed out that, you know, there's a big change proposed in your area. Also, you know, in terms of notification to, to these folks, getting, getting the information out there, it's important. I mean, I read where, you know, some of the concern is you get people to come in and they comment about things that have no relationship to the issue. And I, you know, I appreciate that, but I think it's important to realize that some of those people are gonna share things, maybe not associated with that, and they, and they're getting involved, which is good. And they're gonna share things that maybe will impact what, you know, staff realizes is going on and, and future decisions. So, thank you.
I really appreciate you flushing this out. The whole reason I really brought it up was in reviewing the public comments, there was a lot of passion behind, really, the move, if we were to move from 300 to 100, for example, there would be a reduction in transparency. It sounded like basically the democratic process would be further reduced. And so I think it was important to have a discussion because people online want to be able to see that we're actually talking about this. I guess that was my, my primary, my primary feeling, and I guess my next question, a follow-up to that, is would there, I guess, are the costs completely, does the city bear that burden or some of the costs is, is shared by the applicant? And I guess my question is, have there been complaints from folks pursuing annexations on the, the costs associated with that? I guess that would, that would, that would weigh my, that would weigh my... I guess that would that would that would weigh my that would weigh my my thinking, I guess.
Yeah, I'm gonna have um current planning manager speak on that.
Good evening, um Chair and Commissioners, Mark Rust, Planning Manager for the City of Springfield, and I do the current planning. So obviously, I just came into the conversation, I picked up your question. In terms of the cost broadly, I would say the short answer is yes, we have had um people complain about the cost of doing an annexation, even to the extent where, well, let me back up. So part of what historically, prior to two years ago, has been part of the cost of doing an annexation, has been a comprehensive planning annexation fee that is um in addition to what I would say is the base application fee. And the council um put that fee on hold. We haven't been collecting that fee for uh two years now, a little over two years. I think the piece directly to the notice um is part of the question. We do collect a noticing or a posted or mailing fee currently and always have. So in terms of the applicant or the city bearing the cost of doing the notice, whether it's 100 or 300, um, we do collect a fee for that. It's just an average fee. We don't try to adjust the fee based on how large the notice area is. So for and the way state law is set up for fees is we can collect fees in one of two ways. We can either collect the average cost of doing, providing the service, or the actual cost of providing the service. So our fees have been based on the average. So I want to say I think the fee is like $691 is just the postage or mailing fee for an annexation. So that's $691. Um, for some, they probably pay too much, and for others, they're probably paying too little because it's an average. So in terms specific to the postage fee, I wouldn't say we've been getting complaints about that portion, but to put it in perspective, that postage fee of $691 is pretty small compared to the overall cost of doing an annexation. Does that answer the question? I'm happy to elaborate or provide any more.
Yeah, I'll let uh Commissioner Salazar jump in real quick, but I just wanted to respond to that. Thank you. And I guess in my mind, maybe just for the benefit of the um the Commissioners, what I was weighing in my mind is, you know, if we do reduce to the 100 100-foot uh area option, it sounds like we'll probably save money in staff time, save money in fees. Um, but is that worth maybe a diminished um public perception for um transparency? So basically, we're subtracting 200 feet and allowing more folks to have a say essentially. And I guess that's what's my my decision making process here.
Thank you, Chair. And um Mark, just a follow up question of regarding the um the mailing costs or the main, the the notice of hearing fee in general. You mentioned that as being a small portion of the total annexation fees. Are the, do the annexation fees vary from annexation to annexation, or is it fairly similar from project to project as it is with the here, the the notice of hearing fee? And I guess to really get to my question is, what percentage of the total fees is this mailing fee?
I'm I'm probably gonna look at Shannon to help me with the fee. Do you know off the top of your head what the base annexation fee is?
Um, off the top of my head, I um.
Do you have?
They're tiered, so um there's a a lower cost for annexation of a single, a single family residential lot that is less than 10,000 square feet. Then there's a one to five acre, five to 10 acre, um, and then it goes up from there. So those are incremental.
Haley just found it here. So as Shannon said, it's tiered, and so the single lot base fee is $1,275. So then up from there is less than one acre, um, $2,787. And then in in increments of five acres, so one to five, five to 10, 10 to 25 acres, it goes up to 3,500, 4,700, 6,000. So for a 10 to 25 acre piece of property to annex, um, the base fee of 600, 6,000, that that um mailing fee is 10% of that roughly. So but as you go down, it's a higher percentage, obviously, maybe 20% of the overall fee. And then just to touch on that comprehensive planning fee, also has historically been a per acre fee. And the fee that was suspended by council is, so in addition to the base fee, and let's just use a 10-acre parcel, it's $6,000 base fee plus the mailing fee. Then in addition to that, it's $2,444 per acre has historically been that comprehensive planning fee, which I'm going back to the city council on September 9th to discuss further, to request that they reinstate that comprehensive planning fee. Again, it's been on suspension for two years now. Um, but anyway, so that gives you some scope of how large that mailing fee is.
Um, I wanted to kind of circle back to, I think the meat of the proposal for today is about these um lots under 10,000 square feet. And a couple of questions about that. The first question is, um, if we do remove these requirements for those lots, um, I'm assuming that these fees would be a lot lower for those folks? Is that accurate?
So I assume you're asking about like what's proposed in the code. So so what we have proposed in the legislative code is no public hearing would be required for owner consent initiated annexations when they're under 10,000 square feet in the R1 district or designated low-density residential with a failing septic. So that's kind of the key right there. What we have in the code is we're we're making it clear that the property has to have some sort of failing septic. Um, that is where you don't have a public hearing, and then if there's no public hearing, we don't provide this, this notice fee is not collected. Um, you know, we we wouldn't notify the neighbors because no public hearing is required.
And so then they would save on the mailing and they would save on that hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
But we would still collect the fee for annexation and all of the other fees associated with the annexation.
Please.
So our, my understanding, this proposal doesn't include any change to fees. And so this $1,275 application fee for a lot under 10,000 square feet would stay the same. So part of why everybody looked at me when fees were asked about is because I've been working on for over the last year updating our planning fees. And part of that is what I mentioned in terms of the average cost of providing service versus the actual. What we're looking at trying to do is for any application type, including annexations that would go to a public hearing, is instead of collecting an average cost, is collecting the actual cost. So an applicant would submit a deposit upfront of probably what our base fee has historically been, and then we keep track of time, how much time we spend on processing that application, including taking it to a hearing in front of the city council and so forth. And then at the end, we tally up all that time we've spent and charge it against the amount they've paid and then refund anything we didn't use. So that's part of the mechanism we'll be proposing to the city council in terms of adjusting our fees. If a um annexation that doesn't go to a public hearing, we'll have to either keep this base fee or try to start calculating a new average cost of processing those applications.
Okay. Um, thank you. My other question about this particular type of annexation, this really narrow definition of what wouldn't need a hearing, um, it's, I'm I'm pretty familiar with that particular scenario. Um, and I'm wondering, could you see a realistic scenario where a property that met those criteria wouldn't be annexed because of something that was said in a hearing, the the hearing that we're proposing to get rid of? Is it a waste of time because the property has to be annexed because it has a failing septic?
Yes, so I would like legal to provide some clarification on this, um, if possible, or I can address it, just kind of what um what happens when you have a failing septic according to state law? Do you have to annex? Never mind, we're gonna have Jeff answer this question.
I might not. Jeff Pascal, uh, Community Development Director. So I formerly city engineer, and so I dealt with a lot of these failing septic situations and and getting folks hooked up to the sewer and and in back into their house. So my understanding is state law doesn't require them to annex. State law requires them to connect to the sanitary service if they're currently, the way it's written, 200 feet, which is temporary. I think Christina clarified that, and that that goes away in January, I believe, unless the legislate, state legislature extends it, and then it'll go back to the 300 feet. Our municipal code requires them to, basically says, we can't provide services unless they annex to the city. So that's that's the catch. So and and you're right. So if somebody goes to a public hearing, it would be, we would be put in a tough space if somebody said something that council had second thoughts, because we allow for emergency connections. So a lot of times, they're already connected before we even get to the hearing if they've signed the annexation agreement and done everything else, because we want to get them back into their house.
Thank you. Appreciate the clarification. Um, so it is just to make sure that I understand. So while the law doesn't, the municipal code does. So in effect, to be compliant with both, you you have to connect. And in order to connect, you're gonna have to be annexed. So in effect, yes, it would require it. So coming to a hearing, not allowing that would be saying, you know, the city would be standing in the way of them being compliant with the law at that point.
Yeah, so unless the council wants to entertain changing the municipal code and allowing folks to remain in the urban fringe and not annex and connect to the sewer, yes, we would. And that's why we typically, those are not the controversial, as you've probably seen, we we haven't, it's most of the time our annexations come in and they're pretty much, they're pretty straightforward, and we don't get a lot of public comment except from the applicant. Maybe one or two folks may come in to discuss it. But as we get into these areas, much like the Ganson, where we're getting into harder to find locations or the easy ground's been developed, we're starting to get into established neighborhoods, we're starting to see more public interest in those annexations and what may be developed. And a lot of, a lot of the emotion is around what may be developed on that property, and especially with how the state law has changed over time, allowing middle housing.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Haley just wanted to clarify. So there's of the the three scenarios being laid out, we did not receive public comment on, uh, what I heard you say is that we did not receive public comment about failing septic systems. That's pretty non-controversial, it sounds like, um, exempting those from public hearing for the natural hazard areas, also did not receive public comment, also fairly non-controversial. What we did receive public comment around was um the potential to change or any of those, any other annexations that fall out of those two scenarios, um, change the required minimums in terms of who is notified, public notification, and that's where we got the the majority of of public comment from. So just wanted to clarify so we're not getting confused between three very separate issues.
Absolutely, yes. So um, just to clarify the first one about um if there was any kind of public comment about under 10,000 square feet in the R1 with a failing septic. Most of the public comments maybe didn't address it, they had other, you know, suggestions, but I do feel like there were some comments during the workshops or some comments that were received written um that did offer, you know, they were in favor of it. They were in favor of they they could consider that this didn't necessarily need a public hearing. We did not receive any comments during the workshops um or written that was specifically about those natural hazards or or areas. Um, so like I said, those were not included in the legislative code amendments. Um, and as you mentioned, we did receive a decent amount of comments that were not in favor of uh changing the owner consent initiated annexations that go to a public hearing.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Doesn't look like we have any. Is that all you've got for us?
Yes, that's all I have until we go to the public hearing.
Okay, great. Well, let's adjourn the work session. Okay. In that case, I hereby open the regular meeting of the Springfield Planning Commission. Let's do a roll call again since we kind of shuffled in.
Sure, uh Chair Rhodes-Dye.
Present.
Uh Vice Chair Buck.
Present.
Commissioner Salazar.
Present.
Commissioner Thompson.
Present.
Commissioner Schmunk.
Here.
Commissioner Stout.
Here.
And Commissioner Weber. Okay.
Thank you. Uh, any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, um, I propose that we go ahead and do the pledge of the minutes, and then we skip down to um the reports of council action um and business from the Planning Commission and departments, and then we go back to the two hearings.
Agreed. Okay, well, let's do the pledge of allegiance. Okay, uh, so we're gonna move to the minutes from July 2nd, 2024. Are there any corrections to the minutes as published in the packet? Hearing none? The minutes are approved. And now, uh, do we have any uh reports of council action? Hearing none. Um, what about other business from the Planning Commission? What about business from the Public Works Department?
Thank you. My name is Sandy Belson. I'm the Comprehensive Planning Manager and um staff support for the Planning Commission. So we do not have another meeting scheduled in August. It will, you know, we may need to, depending on the outcome of the hearings, but hoping that we'll be able to um continue, I mean, for you to be able to take care of the business for either, both of those this evening. And then we would have the next meeting on September 4th. That's a Wednesday, um, meeting on Wednesday, since Labor Day is Monday, and then the council meets on Tuesday. I will not be here that day, nor will Sarah, so we're going to be leaving you in the good hands of Mark Rust, who you already are familiar with, but then also Shannon, um, who has joined us tonight so that she can fill in um next week, I mean, on for that meeting in September. So um, thanks to Shannon and Mark for stepping up. Um, they'll be able to handle your questions and um or get resources if they don't know the answers. So just in terms of a heads up, that's what's happening for your September meeting. Um, and at this point, we just have a um regular session, public hearing, no work session. Any, does anyone else want to give any department updates? I mean, Mark kind of gave you some updates in what he's working on with the fees, fee studies. So, okay. So, okay.
Is there anything else we feel like we can do before 7? What about the ADA stuff?
I mean, you had your ADA input this, during that session, there's, there was no-
We don't have that again, okay.
No formal action required on it. I mean, I suppose you could do business from the audience. But as I said, if we, I really don't think we should start the-
Yeah, I agree.
Annexation part.
Well, let's just take a break now until 7?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna call our agenda item, the Annexation Code Amendments. And I think Mary Bridget is gonna speak to that.
That's correct, Chair. Before we do so, can you call for any general business from the audience? People not speaking to the public hearings?
She checked the wrong box, so it is, it is public hearing.
It is, okay. If you wouldn't mind just calling for that to make sure we have that on the record, and then I'll go ahead and read that.
So we will now take business from the audience. Did I just ask if there's business? Okay, is there any business from the audience?
You have to define, it's not the annex.
So if you want to speak about the annexation code updates, that will be during that section of the meeting. Okay?
Great, thank you, Chair. I will now talk about the procedural statement for the legislative hearing.
Yes? So...
I can help with this a little bit. So the purpose of providing testimony at the public hearing is to provide testimony. The commission may ask the staff questions. They may get to your question during the hearing, but it's not really meant to be a back and forth time for question and answer. Would you like me to go ahead?
Yes, please.
Okay. So we're starting tonight. We have two public hearings tonight. The first one is a legislative public hearing that has to do with some draft code amendments for annexing property into the city. I'm going to read a short procedural statement, and then the hearing will start. Tonight's public hearing is for a legislative land use decision. A legislative land use decision typically involves the adoption of a new policy that would apply to a large area or a group of people, rather than an application to a single tract of land. Strict notice and process requirements that would apply to a quasi judicial land use decision do not apply to legislative land use decisions. A copy of the procedure for tonight's legislative hearing and copies of the staff report have been posted on SpringfieldOregonSpeaks.org. The criteria for adoption of the Development Code amendments are in the Springfield Development Code, Section 5.6115. Any person with an interest in the proposed code changes may offer relevant oral or written testimony, or both. Following the Planning Commission hearing, the commission makes a recommendation to the city council about whether to adopt or not adopt the proposed code amendments, or whether to adopt them with changes. The council will then hold its own public hearing at a later date on the proposed amendments. Any comments submitted to the Planning Commission will be provided to the city council. Any comments submitted to the city too late for the Planning Commission consideration will be included in the record provided to the city council. Demonstrations from the audience are prohibited. Comments from the audience, or comments from the phone or online that are out of turn will not be part of the record. Chair, it is now appropriate to open the public hearing and ask if any commissioner wishes to declare any potential or actual conflict of interest regarding the proposed code amendments.
Okay. I'm gonna open the public hearing, and I will start by saying that I don't have any actual conflicts of interest, and my potential conflicts of interest, as always, are that I'm a Realtor practicing in this community, and I'm a property owner in Springfield. I did want to disclose that I read briefly through a Facebook thread about this issue. So that was the information that I had outside of this meeting. Commissioner Buck?
I have no actual conflicts of interest or biases. My potential conflicts of interest are that I'm a licensed insurance agent that does this business in the area, and I own real property in Springfield. No conflicts or bias?
No conflicts, bias, expertise contact. I am a owner of real property in Springfield.
I have two potential conflicts of interest. One, that I own residential real estate property in Springfield. The other is that I work for the Lynn County Housing Authority, Public Housing Authority, Homes for Good, who owns and operates and develops residential properties in Springfield.
Oh, Commissioner, so?
No expertise contact, no potential bias, and no conflicts of interest.
Thank you, Commissioners. I have a presentation, and Sarah, would you start it, please? Okay. Hello, and thank you for attending this hearing to discuss the Springfield Development Code amendments for annexation. In a minute, I'll start the presentation as Mary Bridget outlined. Please hold all questions or testimony until the end. Why is Springfield amending the Annexation Section of the Development Code? This project would amend the Annexation Section of the Springfield Development Code in an effort to enable timely, efficient review that aligns with state law. The amendments will clarify the application initiation types. It amends Springfield Development Code 5.7.125 for initiation method requirements and application requirements, to clarify what documents are required for the various annexation applications. It improves efficiency and timeliness for staff and officials to process applications and make a decision. Changes to Springfield Development Code 5.7.115 review provide an option where an annexation does not require but may go to a public hearing. And it removes redundant terms in Springfield Development Code 5.7.113 and addresses appropriate processes in Springfield Development Code 5.7.115. The first topic we're gonna discuss tonight clarifies the three types of initiation method for annexation: owner consent, triple majority, and double majority in the code. To understand the difference between the types, consider that an owner consent annexation is when all of the owners and not less than half of the electors consent to an annexation. A triple majority is when more than half of the owners, who also own more than half the land in the contiguous territory, and represent more than half of the assessed value in the area, consent to the annexation. A double majority is when a majority of the electors and owners of more than half the land consent to the annexation. Notice that city council may initiate annexation of public right of way or other public land contiguous to the city limits. Topic two covers Springfield Development Code 5.7.115 review. This section was amended by adding an owner consent annexation, which does not require a public hearing, unless council chooses to defer action until after holding a public hearing, including a review process for double majority and triple majority annexation applications. And for consistency and clarity, move the recommendation to city council and appeals process to this section as they are part of the review process. On the topic of public hearings, there is a difference between the current code requirements and the minimum state requirements for public hearings. In the current code, practically everything goes to a public hearing, because nothing meets the exception in the code. The code requires a city council public hearing for annexations with an exception in one narrow context: a single lot or parcel adjacent to the city limits and city services, and not divisible by a partition or subdivision. The reduction in minimum lot size changes made during previous phases of the Development Code update project made the clause "not divisible by a partition or subdivision" less applicable than before. The minimum state requirements for hearings, on the other hand, require a public hearing for double majority or triple majority annexations. No public hearing is required for owner consent initiated annexations. Note that the proposed legislative code, although not required by state law, includes an option for the director and/or council to call for a public hearing for owner consent annexations. In response to public comment, the Legislative Code amendments were amended to add an option where no public hearing is required for owner consent initiated annexations on a single lot or parcel, zoned R1 and designated low-density residential that is less than 10,000 square feet, and served by a failing septic. Topic three is about Springfield Development Code 5.7.125 Annexation Initiation and Application Submittal. This section was amended by breaking down the initiation method and application requirements by application type, pursuant to either owner consent, double majority, or triple majority. Topic four is about public hearing requirements in Springfield Development Code 5.7.130. Under the current code, notice of a public hearing is mailed at least 14 days prior to the public hearing. To match the notice requirements for a quasi judicial land use decision, the notice requirements were changed to 21 days. Also, in response to public comment, the Legislative Code amendments were changed to match the existing code, which requires an annexation that goes to a public hearing to continue to mail to owners and occupants of properties located within 300 feet of the perimeter of the affected territory. But what standards were not changed? The criteria for approval in Springfield Development Code 5.7.140, the zoning section in 5.7.150, unincorporated land within the UGB is distinguished from land within the city limits by the addition of the Urban Fringe Overlay District, or UF10. The UF10 Overlay District will continue to cease to apply, and the current zoning will apply when annexation approval is granted, and that annexation is voluntary. The amendments to the Development Code are subject to a set of approval criteria noted here on the screen. Based on the staff report and findings, the code amendments are in conformance with the Metro Plan and Springfield Comprehensive Plan, are consistent with applicable state statutes, and are consistent with applicable statewide planning goals and administrative rules. Thus, the applicable approval criteria are met. So what are the next steps? The Planning Commission will review the proposal and any testimony during tonight's public hearing. If needed, the commission could decide to continue the public hearing to allow for additional public comment, or close the public hearing and conduct deliberations. A recommendation would then be forwarded to the Springfield City Council, who must adopt the amendments. A public hearing is scheduled for October 7th, 2024, with the Springfield City Council.
Is that all of your presentation?
That is all my presentation.
Thanks, Haley.
Yes.
I will now open the public hearing regarding the Annexation Code amendments. Please remember to keep yourself on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom, or press 9 if joining by phone. If you're here in person, please fill out a request to speak card and present it to the Planning Commission Assistant. When called upon to speak, please state your name and mailing address. Please keep your comments to two minutes. So if you have a lot of request to speak card, I think now is the time to come and speak.
Okay, can I call Bee James up to the front testimony camera, please? And then you can, when you want to speak, please give your name and your address. You have two minutes to speak, and plus, press that button in the middle. Oh, I heard, yeah. So three. Sorry, no, that's why, yeah, sorry. Yeah, three. So three minutes, please state your name and your address, and when you're, I mean, press the button, so it turns green. Thank you.
My name is Bee James. I live at 3325 Pheasant Boulevard in Springfield. I am requesting that the current annexation codes for public notices, public hearing, and public participation be upheld and remain the same. Yet, incorporate consideration for single-family home annexation applications with no plans for development be excluded from public hearings. I am also requesting that there be mandatory requirements for a public hearing for annexation applications with land development plans that stretch beyond a property's existing blueprint. Last, I am requesting public comment opinions of all community citizens, including urban growth boundary, be considered in the annexation criteria as supported in the Citizen Involvement Program of 1990. The annexation criteria is out of code for not upholding the Citizen Involvement Program of 1990, which states, it's just a small piece of it, "The city of Springfield encourages citizens to participate in city government. The city recognizes that citizen involvement fosters good government decision-making and builds trust in the community. In the spirit, the city of Springfield provides a citizen involvement program to create and maintain a positive climate of knowledge and understanding about city government decision-making." It is my understanding, after speaking to the Policy Analyst and Communications Manager with the Department of Land Conservation and Development, also known as the DLCD, the Springfield Involvement Program of 1990 was created with consideration from the DLCD's Oregon statewide land use goals, which include 19 statewide land use planning goals. The number one goal of the Citizen Involvement Goal, which states, "The opportunity for citizens to be involved in all phases of the planning process." It requires each city and county to have citizen involvement program that addresses opportunities for widespread public involvement, effective two-way communication with the public, the ability for the public to be involved in all phases of the planning process, making technical information easy to understand, feedback mechanisms for policymakers to respond to public input, and adequate financial support for public involvement efforts. I'm perplexed by many of the documents in the agenda packet today that seem to have proposed changes that will be voted on possibly prior to tonight's meeting, where you are hearing citizens' comments. Perhaps the Springfield Planning Commission and city planning managers and attorneys would benefit from the consultation with a regional representative from the DLCD. They are willing and eager to discuss your policy changes that impact citizen involvement. Thank you for your service to the city and for your consideration.
Thank you.
Will Aleah Abeta come up to speak, please? And please give your name and your address.
Aleah Abeta, 3120 Oriole Street. So not only are we here to ask you to keep the public hearings for owner-initiated annexations, we're here to ask you to expand it to include public opposition or support. All of you have my email already, for it's part of the record. So I'm not gonna rehash all the thoughts on why the public hearings should be kept. You know, I think we've had references in the tonight's agenda that the quasi judicial land use decisions are based on the criteria in the comprehensive plan. Every single time we ask for something, we are pointed someplace else. The goalposts are moved every time we come and ask for what we need from our representative, our city council, our commissioners. It feels like we can only have a voice in the proposed changes, but not the process itself. It's been extremely narrowed. If we take the Game Farm Road annexation as an example, there is no room for public involvement in the annexation process or the development process. We were told that we can't be a part of the development conversation, and the annexation criteria does not include anything that has to do with thoughts of toxicity, safety, traffic, privacy. We show up for the public hearing, we talk about those things, livability. We're told that that's not part of the criteria. We ask if we can be involved in the development process? Can't be, because of the state requirements. We show up here to ask for changes, to not reduce the public hearing and actually enhance it. We're told, gotta be hard of the comprehensive plan. So there's a theme here that's happening every time we show up. So there's a theme here that's happening every time we show up, and something is wrong in the sense that it's not accessible for your normal citizens. We continue to take time off of work to study this stuff, to be here, to send our emails, to raise awareness, and every single time we're told, no, sorry, gotta go to the other thing. Go to this, go to that. That's not working. There must be an avenue to bring us back into the conversation beyond the limited scope of annexation criteria that doesn't account for things like toxicity, livability, traffic, any input on having a two-story building built in your backyard with no, with no say. Overall, you know, I think you guys have realized we're not really going to go away. You've inherited some problems because I think some of these things predate those who are sitting in front of us and the city council. But we are here, we are paying attention. The Game Farm Road annexation was a huge wake-up call for us. And what we're really asking is that you guys ask the questions, bring us back into the conversation, find a way to enhance either the comprehensive plan, the code, whatever it takes to bring us back to the conversation and listen to what we're saying and what we're trying to get done as citizens of Springfield.
Thank you.
Megan Watson, can you please come up to the testimony camera and, Mike, and state your name and your address, please?
Good evening. My name is Meg Watson. I live at 3310 Oriole Street. And I hate when I have to follow those two. So as B. and Aleah have stated, we're becoming regulars in this room here almost as often as you all are. I will say that I'm very happy to see that the decision was made to keep the 300-foot notice for annexation as opposed to changing it to 100-foot, given the size or length of some lots that can narrow a lot of people out of that notification. So thank you for, Haley, for keeping that in. Really appreciate it. In addition to some of the points that have already been brought up, a concern that I have is, again, aligned with development, but I also don't want to put undue burden on individuals who are just trying to improve their own personal properties when it comes to the septic systems and/or getting connected to better electric sources or things like that. So something I had mentioned last time I was here was a proposal that if a lot adjoins with X amount or more of other lots, that would initiate a public hearing. If you, again, I'll reference Game Farm because that's what I'm most familiar with. Forty-two other lots adjoin that one. So that's a lot of people and a lot of homes that are impacted just along the border of that lot. Whereas if you have an individual who's just looking to get sewer connection, they probably have two or three neighbors, and that wouldn't necessarily warrant a public hearing. I also echo the thoughts about improving the annexation process to incorporate more real-life experiences from the public. And I would love to see an urban growth boundary elected representative sit in on those meetings. It was definitely disappointing to not have the county commissioner that represents us in the room for any of those public hearings that we had with the city council. I'm not sure if anybody sitting up here lives in urban growth boundary, but if you do, thank you for representing us. But if not, I would love to see somebody get on the planning committee from the UGB. And yeah, so just having more public input and representation, I think, across the board is really important here, not just with annexation, but with all city decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lyndon Norred, please come up and state your name and your address, please.
Lyndon Norred, live at 917 Prescott Lane, Springfield, Oregon. I'm just representing Glenwood Christian Church on Henderson Avenue. And we were just wondering on this annex stuff if any of it was going to be affecting Henderson Avenue and Glenwood area. So that's all I wanted to know. I don't really have a request for doing anything for property or anything. We were just curious if something was going on and gonna happen down that street.
I'll ask your question when we get done with the public comment. Thank you.
Okay. Well, that was just it.
Well, we'll just let all the public comment happen, and then I'll ask staff your question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no more requests to speak, and there's nobody in the online.
Thanks. Can someone speak to that question about the church in Glenwood?
Yeah, I'll, I'll say that what we're looking at is changing the code that governs how we process annexation applications, but we are not actually annexing any property. It will still be up to every property owner to request annexation, and then we would process it. So there is no direct impact of these changes on the Glenwood Christian Church other than we're hoping that it, these changes will make it easier if and when you decide to annex and connect to city services, what the process would be.
Thank you. So the public hearing is now closed. And I'm wondering if or what questions the commissioners have for staff. Commissioner Buck?
Not so much as a question, but, you know, I just wanted to say that I appreciate those of you who came to speak. This is the first time I've seen this group come to the Planning Commission. Usually, it's a bunch of empty chairs. So we do appreciate hearing from you guys tonight and your perspective. It's always helpful. So I just wanted to kind of say that that's noted, and it's appreciated by this group up here.
I agree. Commissioner Buck, do you have anything?
I wanted to echo that. I appreciate the involvement. I guess I was concerned a little bit or questioned maybe for staff, but ladies expressed some frustration with the process. But I mean, I guess my comment is I'm frustrated with it too, but a lot of this coming from the state and forcing it upon the city. And if you're getting the feeling that there's nothing we can do, that's apparently the case. So, I mean, I think the staff is doing what they can to the extent that they might be look uncaring. You got to remember that. And, and, and I get that they got, you got mixed signals. But, you know, read some of the regulations that I have to comply with. And, you know, they're not always equal. There's some, some things that will override other things. You know, this is law, this is statutes are like this. So anyway, I just want to say that I think staff's doing what they can. And, and, you know, we appreciate keep, 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 keep helping us. I appreciated the, the comments that you folks sent in. Helps me clarify and/or flush out some of the information I'm hearing. If it comes from a different source, it's just helpful. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Not to completely echo everyone, but I did want to, again, compliment the folks who did provide comments. I read all your comments. I appreciate your input. And the perspective that you provided really helped expand my own perception and think about it from, think about the situation, how this would impact you all. So again, showing up, providing comment and submitting comment helps us better understand how it's impacting the public more so. So with that in mind, also want to compliment the staff. I think, Haley, your memo was, was excellent and helped us understand what's being proposed, what's, who's going to be impacted and how it can make things run smoother with the city of Springfield. Thank you.
I mean, just as a comment, and then we'll move into staff questions after chair. Yeah, so, yeah, I'd just echo my fellow commissioners. I know it's always when we get folks in these chairs, like it's, it's, I think it's helpful for us to hear from the public, but also acknowledging that usually when we get folks in chairs, you're coming because you're pissed off. And so acknowledging that, that there have been, yeah, some really difficult decisions that you've, that have brought you to this point. But also, I think it's helpful for us, it's helpful for every public body to hear folks, hear from folks who are impacted by, by policy decisions. And to that end, I think just recognizing that all the members of, of this body and any public body are also citizens of Springfield, and just encourage that keep eyes out for future opportunities to get involved and become members of bodies like this when, when there are openings, because that's where you can have a lot of say and a lot of sway. But yeah, to, to that end, I think getting into questions, I think for me, it'd be helpful to hear about one, one piece that I heard was a desire to change criteria for approval. And that's not necessarily pertinent to our, I mean, it's like not pertinent to the decision that's what we're asked to be, we're asked to be giving input on in this conversation. But just wondering if, in general, you could speak to Haley, what informs the criteria of approval, how the criteria of approval are set, and what ability we have as a body and as the city to change criteria for approval?
Yes, so I'd just like to point out that there's quite a few policies in place regulation-wise for what is part of the criteria of approval. So usually you hear us mention the Springfield Comprehensive Plan. Before that, the Metro Plan. We have the Springfield Development Code. We also have state statute. So all of those things are kind of a part of the criteria of approval. Mostly, we're looking at the Springfield Comprehensive Plan. That was outlined in the staff report and kind of our compliance with that. Again, there's also the state statutes, usually for public notice requirements, public hearing requirements, as I outlined in the presentation. So as far as if we wanted to amend the criteria of approval, those are the things that we're looking at. We're looking at, you know, a look at the Springfield Comprehensive Plan. Obviously, the Development Code, and all of those things would then have to comply with state law.
Thanks, Haley. I can't see on my screen, but Commissioner Stav, did you have any questions you wanted to ask?
I've kind of wondered in the background, what is the actual liability to either the planning commissioners making a land use decision and/or city councillors if they were to vote outside of the stipulated approval criteria? I'm just, I'd be really curious. Do we go to jail? Would we pay a fine of $1,000? Because there might be some things that are worth standing up for a night in jail just to prove a point that the state is messing around with something as sensitive as people's homes and lives. Thank you.
I'd be happy to try and answer that question. So as Haley was talking about, land use decisions are based on conditions of approval, which can be found in a Development Code, those, or criteria, I'm sorry, criteria for approval. To find a Development Code, those can be derived from a comprehensive plan and then also state law and the state land use goals. If the local government is to make a decision that would be outside of or inconsistent with those requirements, it's not a criminal issue necessarily, but it would result in an appeal, which could result in a reversal or it coming back to the city to address.
I'll just add a little bit more. So if someone thought that the council's decision did not comply with the criteria of approval, then they would, as Mary Bridget said, appeal, and that appeal would be to the Land Use Board of Appeals. So that's how that would be processed. Then the Land Use Board of Appeals would look at the criteria of approval and the council's decisions, the findings that were supporting that decision, and determine whether the findings were, in fact, showing compliance with that criteria of approval. And if not, then they would remand it or overturn the council's decision.
Would there be an additional penalty to the council? Let's say a decision was made outside of that, and then the Board of Appeals did remand the decision. What would be the penalty to the Planning Commission or the city council?
To my knowledge, there's no additional penalty such as a criminal sanction like jail or a fine. I think there could be additional liability that could cost the city money, and then there would be delay in the time and energy that goes into processing the appeal.
So during the testimony, we, we heard that there's some mixed answers on where the involvement can be. As it, as it speaks to the annexation process, can, can we have some clarification as to where citizens who are maybe not even affected but aware of an annexation being, being processed, where they can, you know, have that voice be heard and also impact the process? At what point along the process can they be involved? How does that happen?
So if there's a public hearing, anybody can come to that public hearing and speak. I think some of the concerns about who's actually making the decision, and that's our city council. So the city under our charter is just, the council is the decision-maker as to the boundaries of the city limits. We will only typically annex property that's within the urban growth boundary. And so the County Board of Commissioners has co-adopted that urban growth boundary and has agreed to the idea that any land within the urban growth boundary is intended to be available for urbanization, so annexation and development. So in that sense, there's a decision prior to annexation in terms of the setting that urban growth boundary that the County Board co adopts. But then the decision to actually annex is made by the city council. If there's a public hearing, anybody can speak to it. If there's no public hearing, then there's no other opportunity to speak about that particular annexation.
Thank you. I think we're done with commissioning questions unless anybody wants to add any last things. Are we ready for a motion to approve a recommendation on the Code amendments?
Chair, as a point of order, I believe we need to vote first to close the public hearing if we're
Okay.
Vote on a motion.
Actually, I think you closed the hearing, and it's a legislative matter, so you don't, I mean, you can vote, but you don't have to, so you're good. On the next one, you go.
Thank you, Mary Bridget.
So I can maybe help here. The order in the Planning Commission packet as presented would approve the legislative amendments as Haley had presented, and that includes the maintaining the notice to the properties within 300 feet to both the owners and the occupants. So if you want to change that, we would need to So if you want to change that, we would need to change the motion and the legislative amendments would need to change to reflect that direction. It also includes the provision for a public hearing for all owner initiated consent annexations, except those that meet those criteria that she talked about, which are the property owners that own less than 10,000 square feet that zoned R1 designated LDR and in which there's a failing septic. So if you want it to be, if you want to allow more annexations to go without a public hearing than those very limited situations, then we would also need to change that in the legislative amendments for the code. So I just want to make sure you understand what's in the order. And if you want to change that, you can certainly change that. And we can either do that now or we can come back to you with the amendments that would reflect your direction.
Thank you. So, so just clarifying this leaves, the motion as it's presented in our packet leaves public hearing open unless those criteria are met. And while state law wouldn't require annexation, it would require hookup, as we heard in our work session. And in order to do that, the municipal code requires hookup. So either way, and there's, there's not really room to, there's not really room for a decision in a, in a public hearing in, under that criteria.
So I think what you're saying, and check me if I'm right, is that property owners with failing septics are basically required to annex. And the city would want to annex them in order to help them maintain their residence. And so there's not much that someone would say during a public hearing that would change the outcome of that decision.
Yes.
And so therefore, that's a situation in which you wouldn't need to have a public hearing. And that's how the amendments are presented.
All right. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that before I made the motion. All right. I move to adopt the orders in attachments four and five for this agenda item, recommending the city council approve the comprehensive plan map amendment and zoning map amendment.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Commissioner Buck, it's actually the motion on page three of five.
Wrong one. That's what I was curious about. Okay. I move to approve the order in attachment two of the agenda packet for this item, recommending the city council adopt the proposed code amendments.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion of the motion?
So would you clarify the motion again, please?
Motion was this right here?
Please.
So the, the motion moves to adopt what's proposed. It would keep the 300 foot for owners. And it would remove the public hearing in the instance of failing sector, because they're caught between two codes. The law doesn't require it. Law requires hookup to services. The city requires annexation in order to do that. So in that sense, a public hearing, there's, there's no decision that could get made other than annexation at that point.
So, so can I, can I ask a question of staff? Is that please? So I'm trying to understand the magnitude of a notification. So if, if there's an annexation, there's sort of two pieces. There's the staff time to create it. And then there's the public peer, uh, public meeting portion where you're going to both have to create documents for presentation and notify. So whether you notify occupants and owners or owners only, that's not a significant piece of that the public notice requirement, public hearing requirement. I mean, just give me a kind of a feeling for that. I mean, it's just mailing, so, but it could be significant.
I mean, we do get that notice fee that is part of the annexation application. And that includes the notice to owners and occupants. It is staff time to prepare those documents, as you mentioned. So let me see, actually. I had a breakdown earlier of how much staff time that that takes. I think the guest amount was about eight hours of staff time and that's multiple staffs here tonight also presenting on that. So Shannon is here, she, she prepares some of the documents, Mark, some of Mark Russ's team also prepare the documents. So there's a, a large amount of people who provide it. And like Mark mentioned in the work session, part of that average fee that we collect is included in that. And we collect that for every annexation application. So that could change with Mark's fee schedule assessment, but I, I can't really comment on how much that would change without having that information in front of me.
Let me clarify. So I guess I'm, 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 I think it's important to notify owners. I'm not so sure about occupants. Okay. Well, for whatever reason. But I just, I mean, because you're, you're opening the door up to more discussions from people that, yeah, maybe they have a legitimate concern, but they're, so I think it's, it's important that owners participate as much as possible and that the general public be aware of it because of their proximity to the change. But I'm just trying to find out if we should include occupants or not in the proposal. That's kind of.
I, I can provide a kind of a real world example to give you some sense of the difference between including just owners versus owners versus occupants.
Can we let Andrew say something first?
I, I appreciate that and I definitely want to hear what you have to say. I, I will only, I want to say that, well, I definitely appreciate where you're coming from with the owners having that liability. We've also heard pretty clear testimony that citizens want to be notified and, and involved. And I think, you know, the, the, the public testimony is just not less notification and less involvement, but more, more involvement. And it doesn't feel like there's a significant burden to, that I see here. And maybe Mark will clarify and change my perspective on this. But including occupants doesn't seem like a, like a high bar for us to reach. But it does speak directly to the public comment that we've had tonight about wanting to be more involved, more informed and, and, and those things. And I, and I think that's important because we've also heard that they feel like they come and they give their perspective. And it's, it's not, it's not heard or valued or effective. And so, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't see the huge cost there. But I do think that, you know, being notified that maybe you don't own it, but you could be impacted as an occupant. Notification doesn't seem like a high bar that's going to impact all those things. And if it leads to more discussion, then it does. But I just think, I just want to speak to what we've heard tonight as all.
Sorry. Well, I mean, Mike, my, I mean, there's, there's a couple of problems to solve. A is, you know, making sure the public's aware and, and of involvement. And then there's the dollars that it takes to get it done. And, you know, the barriers to housing are partly the cost of the city services. And so someplace you have to start whittling away at some of those expenses. I'm not sure this is where, but I'm just suggesting that this may be an opportunity to to try to minimize some exposure to city staff, which is cost, you know, president's money. Thank you.
It's not necessarily always housing. So some occupants are businesses that lease that have been, you know, in their space for a long, long time. So I guess it's just another wrinkle to consider if you're talking about occupants. Sorry, Mark, go ahead.
Yeah, and that's a great point is a lot of times the tenants are commercial or industrial tenants on properties. I would, just a quick example is where we would see the, the biggest difference, I would say, in the number of notices that gets sent when it does include occupants or always has include occupants is an apartment complex property. So that the 300 foot mailing distance may typically include, say, a handful or a dozen or 20 properties. But as soon as it cuts or touches even just the corner of a property that has an apartment complex, the number of notices goes up from say 20 notices to hundreds of notices. So, and, and we've had this happen recently. And I know Shannon deals with this directly. But so as soon as we touch even a portion of that apartment complex property, we mail the hundreds of notices to all those apartments. And so the, again, the, the number of notices we print and fold and mail and provide postage for goes up exponentially to the hundreds for every single apartment. The other place than that kind of impacts is the number of calls or questions we get from those increased number of people. A lot of times people don't understand why they're getting the notice. So it's, it's then, it's an educational piece too, for us to provide information to the community. But as a tenant, they, they don't understand what's their role or, or why they may or may not want to provide input on that application. So.
Well, I guess that speaks directly to what I'm trying to suggest is, is that this exposure for the city. I mean, I get that they've, they've been tenants, but if that owner of that property is not informing their tenants of changes, that's a problem between the owner and the tenant. That's not necessarily a city problem to notify them. And then perhaps there's a way to roll in some, if you think somebody's got some installation or what have you, perhaps you could roll in the the other, what am I trying to say? Where they've got equipment that's taxed or, you know, it's not only value of property, it's value of installation or value of, of proper other property, not using the right term, but get my, my, my point. But I'm just saying, I, I guess, I guess I'd like us to exclude occupants of a keep 300 feet. So with, and so after discussion, I'd like to make a adjustment emotion, emotion.
I think you need to vote on the motion unless the people making the motion agree to the change. So I would suggest you vote on this one, see if it passes or not. And then you could have a, another motion.
Okay. Do we have any more discussion before we want to vote on this one?
Chair, just one item for the public. Just note that we are making a recommendation to city council. This isn't, even though we've closed the public hearing on this item, this isn't, this is closing the public hearing, we're not taking any more public testimony, legally can't because we've closed the public hearing. But that's just to make this recommendation to council. There is more opportunity to come to council. I know many of you have already spoken to council, but there is opportunity after we make this recommendation to speak to council regarding our recommendation when they vote on it on October 7th. So just want to note that for the public.
Thank you. Commissioner Buck?
One other mechanism we have available to us, Commissioner Spunk, is to make sure that we pass on to our council liaison, which is my role, what NAL and I will do, that that's, that was a point of, this was a point of discussion. They should watch the, the, the public, the discussion and that there was varying perspectives on, on the occupants. So when they make their, when they make their final decision on it, they can take all those perspectives into account, since what we are really doing is just passing on recommendations. If we were to pass this motion, we can do so with the recommendation that they pay special attention to the perspectives on occupant notification.
Okay. I think I'll call for a vote. Can we have a roll call, please, Sandy?
Sure. Chair Rhodes, die?
Aye.
Vice Chair Buck?
Aye.
Commissioner Salazar?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmunk?
No.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
All right, motion carries five to one.
Okay. So we have another agenda item, the comprehensive plan amendment and zone change. The property in Glenwood owned by Wylish Land Co. I think, Mary Bridget, you're up.
Chair, I'd like to now talk about the quasi judicial statement of legal rights. The planning commission will be considering another item. This is a different type of hearing called a quasi judicial hearing, has more significant legal restrictions, and I'd like to go through those now before the hearing gets going. The role of the planning commission is to conduct public hearings and to make decisions about land use matters in Springfield. In making those decisions, the commission must apply the law of Springfield that existed when the application was filed, and cannot vary from or change that law. Members of the planning commission are to be unbiased. Before the start of the hearing, the planning commission will state whether they have a potential or actual conflict of interest. A potential conflict occurs if the commission's recommendation could result in a financial benefit or avoiding a financial detriment for the commissioner or their household or a business for which they're associated. An actual conflict occurs if the commissioner's recommendation would have that result. If such a potential conflict exists, the commissioner will state whether he or she is without actual bias or whether he or she would like to step down from the planning, planning commission during that case. If an actual conflict exists, the commissioner must step down from the commission during that case and may not participate in the deliberations or decision making. Commissioners will also state whether they have discussed the application in question with any of the parties or have independent knowledge of relevant facts, such as from a visit to the site. If any commissioner has such ex parte contacts, they must disclose the substance of that contact. If a commissioner has independent knowledge of relevant facts, the commissioner must summarize those facts if they are not already included in the record. During the time for public testimony, a witness may challenge the impartiality of the planning commissioner. It may rebut the substance of a commissioner's knowledge of the facts. The commissioner in question may respond to that challenge. A copy of the procedures and agenda for today's hearing and copies of the staff reports have been posted on SpringfieldOregonSpeaks.org. Any person with an interest in today's agenda may offer relevant oral or written testimony or both. If you'd like the planning commission to consider your testimony and to preserve your right to appeal the decision to the Land Use Board of Appeals, you must testify orally or in writing to the planning commission or city council before the council closes the record. You must raise an issue clearly enough so people can understand what it is and offer evidence in support of it, or else you cannot raise the issue on appeal. If you are the applicant, you must raise concerns about any conditions of approval clearly enough to allow the planning commission or the council to respond in order to preserve your right to seek damages and circuit court. If you feel the need, I'm sorry, if you feel you need more time to prepare evidence or testimony for the planning commission, you can ask the commission to hold the record open or to continue the hearing. You must make that request before the chair closes the public portion of the hearing. If the planning commission holds open the record, you can submit additional written testimony and evidence into the record before the commission makes the decision. If the planning commission continues the hearing, then oral and written testimony, including new evidence, can be offered at the future hearing. Regardless of whether the hearing is continued or the record is held open for any reason, state law provides that we must hold open the record for at least seven days after it is closed to all other parties to allow the applicant to submit final written arguments in support of the application, unless the applicant waives that right. Please make sure your testimony is related to the applicable criteria. The criteria for a comprehensive plan map amendment is in the Springfield Development Code, section 5.14135. And the zoning map amendment criteria is 5.22115C. The criteria described in more detail in the staff report posted on Springfield Oregon Speaks and will be summarized by staff and presentation this evening. Demonstrations from the audience are prohibited. Comments from the audience or comments from a phone or online that are out of turn will not be part of the record. Chair, it is now appropriate to open the public hearing and ask if any planning commissioner wishes to declare any potential or actual conflict of interest, ex parte contact or independent knowledge of relevant facts.
Thank you. So I'm going to open the public hearing and, um, I'm going to ask the commissioners to disclose any ex parte contacts, actual bias or conflicts of interest. I'll start. I haven't had any ex parte contacts. I don't have any actual bias or any actual conflicts of interest. Uh, my potential conflicts of interest are that I am a realtor working in this community and an owner of real property in Springfield. Commissioner Buck.
Um, I have had no ex parte contact and, um, no biases or actual conflicts of interest. Potential conflicts of interest, uh, include owning property in Springfield. And, um, as a licensed insurance agent, um, doing business in the area.
Commissioner Salazar.
Thank you, Chair. No conflicts of interest, bias or ex parte contacts.
Commissioner Thompson.
No conflicts of interest, bias or ex parte contact.
Commissioner Schmunk.
None, no bias conflicts.
Commissioner Stout.
No conflicts of interest, ex parte contact or, um, I forget the last one. Potential conflicts of interest. Thank you.
Thank you. I think now we have a, a staff report from Andy Lindbergh.
Thanks, Chair. Commissioners. Just going to have the, uh, presentation brought up and I can cycle through a few slides here to give some context for this particular location. Um, but this request is for a comprehensive plan amendment and zone change that affects property in Glenwood. Property is annexed to the city and is currently zoned employment mixed use. In the bottom left, probably. All right. There we go. Okay. So this, this property is, um, in the far kind of southwestern corner of the Springfield jurisdiction. Um, this property is vacant. It is owned by Wildish. Wildish owns properties, um, generally surrounding this area as well. The site is adjoined on two sides by railroad spur lines. Um, the new Wirehauser headquarters building is on the kind of upper right there, just to the northeast of it. That was built just a couple of years ago. It has frontage on Newman Street. And it also has frontage on the Central Oregon Pacific Railroad line along this kind of southwestern flank. Um, this site does not have direct frontage on Franklin Boulevard, unlike other, there's three other lots, um, that are part of this development area. They're currently vacant, but they front onto Franklin Boulevard. The property also owned by Wildish that is operated by Atkor Pipe is across Newman Street to the northwest. Atkor Pipe is running out of room for inventory and some of their lay down space, um, as they're delivering, uh, product, um, to, uh, the, the, basically the, their, their consumer market. And so they have requested of Wildish consideration for incorporating this vacant property into their operating space. In order to do so, the zoning needs to be changed. Light medium industrial zoning does allow for outdoor storage, light manufacturing, the type of use that they're currently, um, doing on the site. The existing operations is in light medium industrial zoning. I'll just show the current zoning and designation for the property that's affected. It's in the McVeigh Riverfront area of the Phase One Glenwood Refinement Plan. And the proposal is to essentially remove it from the Phase One Glenwood Refinement Plan. It would then revert to the 1999 Glenwood Refinement Plan and have zoning in common with the existing Atkor Pipe site to the, to the northwest. Um, this is, this is the current zoning for the site. Proposal is to change it to light medium industrial. Think probably the best, I do have the criteria of approval, but I think for the best for context, for the comments, um, is just the overhead aerial view of the map. I guess just as a staff, this is an observation. Um, we've talked about annexation tonight. Annexation typically involves the extension of urban services and utilities to properties. This is the physical means of doing this is being, uh, manufactured on this site, which is PVC pipe used for everything from storm and sanitary sewer lines, water lines, electrical conduit, that sort of thing. So interestingly, this is a manufacturing company looking to expand in order to provide the necessary infrastructure, the physical, uh, mechanisms for, um, expanding and for urbanization. So that is the request that's before you this evening. Again, this is a recommendation to city council. Uh, staff, um, in your, in your report, staff finds that, um, it is consistent with the criteria of approval. It is a little unusual to remove a property from the Phase One Glenwood Refinement Plan and revert it back to an earlier refinement plan. But it does not preclude this site from being recaptured again should the second phase of the Glenwood Refinement Plan come forward and the sort of the internal areas of Glenwood be, um, be planned for and updated. Um, it is likely that this site, should it revert back to this 1999 refinement plan and have the light medium industrial zoning, it could then be reconsidered once again down the road, uh, for some other type of reuse. But in the, in this instance, the applicant, um, is looking to take advantage of the proximity of the site, its vacancy and the fact that, um, the current manufacturing facility is essentially in need of the rail spur, which is a little unusual and some lay down space, uh, which they don't have because they're completely surrounded by streets right now. And so they're kind of bursting at the seams. And that's the reason for this request. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So before we get to questions, uh, on my sheet, we have an applicant presentation. We don't have that today.
I don't see the applicant in the, in the audience.
So the next thing that I have is, uh, public testimony. Is there any public testimony in favor?
We have no requests.
No requests. Okay. Thanks. So yeah, um, let's, let's do commission questions.
Sorry, before, just because this is quasi judicial, I just want to make sure if you could call for if there's any testimony for, um, neither in favor or opposed or opposed, and then we can say we button that up.
Okay. Is there any public testimony, neither in favor nor opposed? Hearing none? Is there any public testimony opposed to the applicant? Also hearing on none, uh, moving on to questions, um, Commissioner Buck.
Just to clarify for the record, um, Wildish is in support of this as well. Uh, I, I think that's assumed, but I wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, that's correct. Um, Wildish did prepare the application materials, um, on their own behalf. Um, so they're essentially a co applicant in this, um, in this instance. And so they, and they are, they're, they're the property owner of both properties. Um, they're, the tenant is Atkor Pipe, and so they're looking to have their tenant increase, uh, capacity on their adjoining property.
Thank you.
Commissioner Salazar.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Andy, just want to, I got this from context, but just for clarification, um, from the name, it sounds like, the Glenwood Employment Refinement Plan, um, is designed to, um, encourage employment opportunities in the Glenwood area. And, um, I'm inferring that this, uh, rezone away from that refinement plan actually does, um, encourage employment and that it allows this, um, uh, neighboring, uh, use to, um, operate at, at higher capacity. And just reading between the lines there, I just want a clarification.
That is correct. Um, the, the, the current zoning would not allow for the type of use, either the manufacturing aspect of it or the storage aspect of it. So it's, it's a different type of use, like the headquarters building for, for the Wirehauser, which is more internalized. And so that's the reason for requesting, um, the, the change of zoning back to a prior condition that would allow for the manufacturing facility to expand.
Thanks, Andy. Do we have any more commission questions? Hearing none. Would the commission like to close the public hearing and/or the public record or continue the hearing and hold open the record for another date?
And just to note, this does require a motion and a, a vote for this type of hearing.
A, a motion to close the public hearing and then a motion for the amendment. Correct. Thank you.
Yeah, a motion, uh, right now, what would be, um, appropriate is a motion to close the public hearing and the record. And then after that, you move on.
Uh, I move to close the public hearing in the, on the record.
Second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Chair Rhodes Die.
Aye.
Vice Chair Buck.
Aye.
Commissioner Salazar.
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson.
Aye.
Commissioner Schmunk.
Aye.
And Commissioner Stout.
I don't think we quite heard you, Commissioner Stout.
Aye. Yes.
So the motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. If we're ready to discuss the application, um, I will entertain a motion from the commission.
I move to adopt the orders in attachments four and five for this agenda item recommending the city council approve the comprehensive plan, plan, map, uh, amendment and zoning map amendment as proposed tonight.
A second.
Do we have any discussion to the motion? Hearing none, uh, can we have a roll call for a vote, please?
Sure. And I'm going to mix it up. Uh, Commissioner Salazar.
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson.
Aye.
Commissioner Schmunk.
Aye.
Chair Rhodes Die.
Aye.
Vice Chair Buck.
Aye.
And Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. So we've covered the rest of our agenda for today at the beginning. So I'm going to adjourn the planning commission regular meeting.